Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, March 1st, 2010. It's on there about 7:30 PM. We just hit 7:30. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Next item on our agenda is disposition of minutes, but I don't have a list of dates on that. I don't think we really needed that item on tonight's agenda. Under communication, I am in communication of several things. One is a liquor permit transfer going to Salam Restaurant. It is a D1, D2 permit. Salam, if this is granted, will be able to sell beer and wine. It is a Trex-type permit. I believe it is coming from, of all interesting places, Dillon Vale, Ohio is where this license comes from. The Trex permit allows it to come from a different locale altogether. So without any objection, we will not ask for a hearing on that. Also, I am in communication of a recommendation from the planning commission. And this I will read quickly. On February 17th, 2010, the Athens City Planning Commission held a public hearing to receive public comment and input regarding a rezoning request for Mike Smeltzer. The request is to extend the current B2D district on Court Street to include part of the B3 district and therefore the same restrictions and privileges. A map showing the existing and proposed change is attached. On February 17th, 2010, the Athens City Planning Commission voted 4 to 0 to recommend to city council to extend the B2D district to include part of the B3 district as shown on the attached map. So we will pass that along to our planning and development committee chair to take the next proper step. I'm also in receipt of a communication from Richard Cordray, the Ohio Attorney General, who would like everyone to know that he is holding community forums across the state wanting to let everyone know what programs and services are available from the Attorney General's office that can help the community fight back against financial predators in the endlessly creative ways they find to target and rip off hard-working families worried about their futures. He will be in Athens at the Community Center on March 11th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM addressing those concerns. Are there other communications that you'd like to share? Yes, Ms. Paul.
Thank you. Next Monday, the 8th of March, we will be holding an informal public meeting about the contractor permitting process that I brought up last week during committee meetings for people to have input from the public.
Member Butler, did you also have something you wish to say?
Yes, thank you, sir. I just wanted to briefly mention that I was the recipient of some emails from residents of University Estates essentially acknowledging their concerns about the deteriorating road conditions up there. So I have spoke with the mayor about this as well. It is a challenge since the city is not responsible for those particular roads. That's my understanding. We annexed the area into the city, but the roads have not been yet accepted. But I am aware that this is a concern and those people up there living are a little frustrated.
And that's part of the first ward for whom you represent?
Yes, sir.
And there is a lawsuit pending before the city even as we speak regarding many of these issues. Are there any other communications any members of council wish to share? Onto reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wild.
Nothing much really to communicate. I think you covered the Cordray event. I think, as everybody knows, we had a little bit of a bomb scare at the parking garage earlier today.
A little bit of a bomb scare.
Yes, well, there wasn't a bomb, but it was a suspicious package, so we called Columbus and got the bomb squad down here. Shut the part of the offices down for about two hours, two and a half hours. But again, it was not a bomb, but the idea is to err on the side of caution.
Sure.
And other than that, I have nothing to communicate.
City auditor Kathy Hekt.
No report.
Mary Ann McClure, city treasurer.
Thank you. I have the fourth quarter 2009 report, interest income report, and attached to the back are the bank reconciliations showing the balances for October, December, and December. Our total interest income for the year was $198,418.50 out of a projected $268-plus. The interest rates are very stagnant. They've gone up just a hair, but not enough to make a difference, and I don't, from what I think so far this year, it's not really changing. So our picture will probably remain about the same.
Not quite make budget, but...
No, we had over $50,000 of accrued interest at the end of the year in CDs, but we decided to leave it in until full maturity comes close.
Questions for the treasurer. Anything else, Mary Ann?
Mr. President, I move to accept the treasurer's fourth quarter report and bank reconciliation sheets.
Motion and second, and there's further discussion. All those in favor of accepting the treasurer's report?
Aye.
Opposed? The report has been accepted. City law director Patrick Lang.
I have no report.
Thank you. We move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 1410 is an ordinance authorizing rehabilitation of the Bryan Lagoon. Sounds like a movie. It's project number 254. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 1410.
Second.
1410 will complete, will allow us to complete repairs on the Bryan Lagoon at the water treatment plant. When we soften the water, we have to dispose of the salty material. And previously, it went out in slugs as the process was going on. Now it goes out on a drip basis instead of this great big bowl rust of rust-encased water. It holds the water and sends it out ever so slowly so that it doesn't contaminate either the land around it or the Hawking River. So that's what's going on.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1410. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 1510 is an ordinance authorizing the cleaning and repair of water wells. Again, member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 1510.
Second.
1510 is an annual ordinance that we pass to allow the director of public works, city engineer, the person that wears many hats, to have our water wells cleaned up so our water supply is constant and in good order.
Further comment? Mayor Wild.
This normally does two wells a year, and we do it in a rotating cycle.
Done that for many years now. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 1610 is an ordinance authorizing construction of a new salt bin, which is project number 242. Member Nysley.
Thank you. Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 1610.
Second.
Okay. This is for the construction of a new salt bin, which will replace one which the city presently has that's 40 years old. And it will be built in the same location with a slightly larger footprint, but something that's been needed for quite a while.
Further discussion. Again, Mayor Wild.
Again, this is going to be a slightly larger salt bin, so we can actually hold more salt, have a better drainage system, so there's no leaching of the chloride or sodium into the ground. Realize this has been kind of being batted back and forth for about four or five years because we weren't sure whether we should try a new location for the service garage, and we really didn't have the money to do that. But also, just how much money do we put into this location? So we're finally going to do something about it. So there we are.
Very good. Other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 1710 is an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Member Kuhn.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 1710.
Second.
This ordinance amends the 2010 appropriation ordinance 1509 by appropriating from the unappropriated balance. We have four things here. The first one is $5,000 to the Athens Enhancement Fund 250 as the city's local match commitment to Hawking, Athens peri-community action to administer a grant-funded mobility manager for Athens County. This was actually appropriated last year but was not encumbered, so it needs to be appropriated again for use this year. The second one is $3,000 to Cable Access Fund 215 for legislative updating and printing of the city code supplement. The third one is $11,000 to the Street Rehabilitation Fund 572 for preliminary engineering of the Richland South Project, number 244. And again, this was appropriated last year but was not encumbered, so it needs to be appropriated again. And the last one is $200,000 to Capital Improvements Fund 580. This is designated for the fire department ladder truck. And this increases the total appropriations by set amounts.
Sir, further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 1810 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year 2010, 2011, Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant. Again, member Kuhn.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 1810.
Second.
This is the annual ordinance that we used to know as the DARE ordinance. Only the name has changed, and this program does provide matching funds to defray the cost of the DARE officer salary up to 50 percent.
Other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 1910 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for calendar year 2011, which is the federal fiscal year 2010. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 1910.
Second.
This ordinance does, just as it suggests, authorizes the mayor to make application for this grant from the Ohio Department of Development. This is what we call our formula grant, a community development block grant. It is a grant of monies that will be used, that must be used, in areas of low to moderate income within the city. And part of the application process will be a series of public hearings to determine what projects we want to proceed with.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 1910?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. We move on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 2210 is an ordinance accepting advanced payment of funds from the University Health Care and Retirement Community for design engineering associated with improvements to Circle Drive and amending ordinance 07109. Onto ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 2310 is an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Member Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance amends the 2010 appropriation ordinance 1509 by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. $43,386.39 to the Transportation Assistance Fund 214 for the ARRA capital grant. $9,828.75 to the Cable Access Fund 215 for equipment, this is for an equipment upgrade for Athens Community Television. $3,000 to the Law Administration Building Improvements Fund 585 for carpet and floor repair.
That's true.
And $15,000 to Internal Service Fund 865 to replace firewall and networking hardware. And this would increase the total appropriations by set amount.
Other comments? Thank you. Oh, Mayor Wild.
I would actually request this to be suspended so we could get the money for the stimulus money for the $43,000 for transportation, if that's possible, into the mix as soon as possible.
Okay.
I forgot to, we had this conversation, but I forgot to ask that.
Oh, okay.
It's not like you forgot, I forgot.
And you need it suspended tonight?
Tonight, instead of the next meeting.
Then I will entertain a motion for suspension of the rules.
I...
If someone chooses to make it.
Mr. President, I move to consider 2310 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion on suspension of the rules only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 2310?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 2310.
Second.
For all the reasons that you stated earlier?
Right, because the mayor, yes.
Somewhat out of order, but earlier, right. Okay. Is there further discussion on adoption of 2310? Mayor Wild.
Again, some of this money was received last year and some of it was received this year. It's maintenance money that comes from the stimulus package. We had about, I think we got a total of about $179,000 of it. About 130 and change had been encumbered last year, so that carried over. This portion we did not encumber, and we needed actually to do the maintenance part. It's part of the maintenance money for the city bus system. So we have to bring it in as fast as possible. And that's really why I was asking for suspension.
Okay.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2410 is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to purchase a police cruiser. Again, member Kuhn, you're busy.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed in committee, the police department has requested the purchase of one cruiser. They did not receive any cruisers in 2009. However, they did via a grant receive a, what was that called?
Kawasaki mule.
A Kawasaki mule. So they are, have requested one cruiser for this for 2010. And so this ordinance would authorize the service safety director to advertise, accept bids, and enter into contracts for the purchase of a police cruiser and ancillary equipment. And also, it would amend the 2010 appropriation ordinance 1509 by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $33,000 to the Capital Improvements Fund 580 and increasing the total appropriations by set amount. The service safety director would be authorized to expend up to $33,000 from Capital Improvements Fund 580 for said cruiser.
That's thoughtful.
That is.
Are there other comments? Under ordinance 2510, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency. It's an emergency that we no longer need them. Member Nysley.
It is. Well, it's an emergency that we need to replace them. So we'll be using these two gravely mowers for a trade-in to purchase new ones, and we need to authorize the city to be able to dispose of them, which is the reason for this ordinance.
Are you in need of suspending, or might we do it at second reading?
I'm not sure. Mayor Wild?
I have no idea. I just wanted to wait till second reading.
I think we could wait till second reading because I wasn't notified that there was an emergency.
Very good.
It'd be passed tonight.
Other comments? I can hardly wait to get to ordinance 2610. It's an ordinance authorizing the filing of a proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C., Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period from January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2011. Member Nysley, I hope you are not going to move to amend.
No. And my explanation will probably be shorter than the title of the ordinance.
I hope so.
But this is an annual ordinance, and what this does is authorizes the city to be able to apply to the Ohio Department of Transportation for federal funds to run our bus system. And as I understand from Mayor Wild, this accounts for approximately 60 percent.
Between 60 to 70 percent, depending on...
The operating funds for the bus system.
Very good. Other comments? Under ordinance 2710, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to designate a contract administrator for the Ohio Rural Inter-City Bus Program and to enter into an administration agreement and declaring an emergency. Again, member Nysley.
Thank you. This ordinance, as it states, would authorize the mayor to, and we discussed this last week at our transportation committee meeting, for him to contract out for the administration of this bus system program. And this is the bus system that runs between Athens and Columbus and with hopes this coming year of a successful grant that will expand the service.
Very good.
Okay.
Other comments? Mayor Wild.
Actually, I would hope this would be suspended, too. We need to do an RFP for this, probably, request for proposals from any grant designee. This, if you remember the conversation I had about the intercity bus system, and this is very similar to our transit system, except it's another federal money. One of the requirements they'd like to see is actually somebody administering the grant. And rather than hire a staff person at this point, we thought we'd be able to contract out for the administration of it. In other words, making sure it gets set up. In particular, the Athens to Cincinnati route has to be built, actually put together, and that's why we need an administrator to do that. But again, the timing is such is that we have an extension of our lakefront grant right now till, I think it's May 1st. We actually got that passed last month. So the faster we could get this, somebody hired to do this, to administer it, the better because they'll have to actually sit down and make a route between it, as well as put an RFP out for the actual bus service itself. I'll be coming to you for the morning.
With that, I will entertain a motion to suspend.
Mr. President, I move to suspend 2810, excuse me, 2710.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion on suspension. All those in favor of suspending the rules on 2710?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move to approve or to adopt ordinance 2710.
Second. Motion and second, for all the reasons...
And this will be for the purpose of a timely submission of an RFP for a contract for an administrator.
Okay. Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of 2710?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Under ordinance 2810, an ordinance granting a revocable license to the owner of 483A and B and 483 and a half, Richland Avenue, to allow parking on the city right-of-way. Member Paul.
Thank you. President. This is, yeah, this is a fairly straightforward, actually renewing of the revocable license. What's happened is that the property has been sold, and there's a new owner, and they'd like to get the license in the new owner's name. I was going through permitting, and everything has been checked out by the city administration.
Are there any other comments? Ordinance 2910, an ordinance amending ordinance 10109, establishing things as required by the Athens City Code. It's introduced by all members of council. Thinking of who it will be. Member Paul.
As we talked about during committee meeting, this was to put into the title 23, 230313, penalty for minor misdemeanors. This has been for sign permit violations. It's been asked by the administration to put in $100 per occurrence. Each day violation continues, constitutes a separate offense.
Other comments? Under ordinance 3010, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the resurfacing of State Route 56, and it says 550, but should say 682, within the corporate boundary. The ordinance itself does state 682. It's only in the title, and the law director has granted that we can recognize this as a typo, given that the ordinance itself has the correct route number. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city received notice on February 26th that the Department of Transportation will be repaving. And this will be to provide an asphalt overlay on these roads indicated. And I do believe that we will want to at the second reading to suspend the rules so that we can move this ordinance forward in time for them to begin repair work.
Very good. Other comments? The next item on our agenda is announcements and other business. Are there any announcements anyone wishes to make or committee meetings we'd like to get scheduled for next time? Member Paul.
I'm planning development, please.
Member Butler.
I'm hoping and thinking positively that the Athens Municipal Office Commission will have made a formal decision on their suggestion to the city and to the mayor regarding HEBI. I have, my subcommittee has submitted the recommendations that we have, and they're considering them and looking at them and voting on them, and hopefully we can then receive that information presented here.
Security committee.
Thank you, member Kuhn. Anyone else? The ever-present Finance and Personnel Committee, no doubt?
Please. We'll meet Thursday.
Okay. Well, we'll have those, if not more. The next item on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and any city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. We've got a nice, large crowd before us, and we do have at least one nice young lady that's going to speak to us. We need you to state your name and address.
My name, my name is Molly Lawhead. I'm with Ohio University Off-Campus Living. I'm a community assistant. And right now, we are, I passed around on the paper, just kind of like a proposal for something that we're thinking about doing as a project in spring quarter. Basically, let me give you a little background on our, on our program. We work as a liaison between the university and the residents of Athens. And for our spring program, we want to host an event on Earth Day, April 22nd, called the Earth Day Green Event, or EDGE. The goal of the event is to bring all the residents of Athens together, including the students and permanent residents, a link at a fun event with a block party atmosphere without alcohol. Our other goals include having the event generate a restricted amount of waste using as little energy as possible and having information on living a more sustainable lifestyle for people of all ages. We've invited local businesses to come up and set up tables in despite the local tastes and unique foods that are available in Athens. We've also invited local organizations that strive to make Athens a more eco-friendly, more eco-friendly, who will host tables to exhibit the many things that they do to try to keep Athens that eco-friendly and beautiful. We also want to have some live music from local and student bands for entertainment. And this event should be fun and interactive as well as educational, teaching attendance how to live sustainably in Athens, Ohio. Like I said, the event will take place on Earth Day, April 22nd, 2010. And right now, the time is tentatively set for like 4:00 to 8:30 at the day, and we're thinking about maybe having an hour before and after for cleanup and teardown and setup and everything. And again, it's going to be a non-alcoholic event. An uptown location for this event is crucial in order for us to achieve our goal of making this a community-wide event, so it's not just for the residents and not just for the students. You want to make it for everyone. And we're asking for your approval to shut down a straight uptown. The location of the EDGE project or area is important as it will help to attract the large amount of crowds of people of all ages and all backgrounds. We're flexible with the location, but again, it would make the event a large success to have it uptown, possibly on Court Street or off of Court Street. Right now, our preferences are Washington Street between Congress and Court Street, Washington Street between Court Street and College Street, State Street between Congress and Court Street. And if these are not available, then we're open to any other... And if these are not available, then we're open to any other suggestions that the city council would like to offer. And we also ask that this proposal to be voted on tonight, so that we can move forward with the final planning stages. And we are aware that the decision is final. And we're just looking forward to a great opportunity for all the residents of Athens to come together and build community and enjoy wonderful food, activities, and music to celebrate Earth Day.
Molly, I think we can work with you on this.
Okay.
But I think what you've seen comes in a certain way, and our rules of council mean that they need to be read three times.
Right.
Now, you also saw that we can suspend the rules.
Right. I just talked to Member Nysley beforehand, so.
And what I would propose that we can do, because I seriously doubt that what you would want to do here would receive any objections.
Okay.
But what we do need to do is make sure that the police and fire are aware of it and where it's going to be, and make sure that they don't come up with any safety concerns.
Okay.
And I think if not seeing any objections from the mayor between now and next week, he can probably find that out. Next week, we'll have committee meetings, which, you know, we will certainly add this to one of the committees and get it discussed right away. And our next regular session of council is on March 15th, the Ides of March. And I would anticipate that we would be able to introduce it as an ordinance, a street closing ordinance, and probably pass it under suspension of the rules. But really, I don't think it is even possible for us, following the rules of council, to vote on it tonight. But I, I'm, one other thing that I'm not allowed to do for legal purposes is poll council and ask them how do they feel about it, because theoretically, people like this should have an opportunity to get to their council members and talk to them about it and that kind of thing. But this is not the kind of event that anyone ever seems to object to.
Okay.
So, if I were you, I would have my organization go ahead and start all your plans.
Okay.
And not seeing anybody wanting to object to the outline that I have given, I would anticipate that that is how this would be handled.
Okay, yes.
Members of council first, any comments? Member Nysley.
I know that Mayor Wild will probably also speak to this, but he has been in conversation with Molly and then Nicole, another woman, young woman, about this event. And so, we've talked about the information we need to get to the police and fire. And yes, and if we need to have a committee meeting, if we need to have a Transportation Committee meeting next week to just bring it forward, to discuss more of the details, we can do that.
Either that or environmental, you know, either one. Probably safety under the circumstances, I guess, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we just wanted to make sure, we just wanted to, you know, kind of propose the idea about this, so, great. I hope it works out.
Mayor Wild.
In the past, I polled the ordinances that have street closings for Earth Day, actually, '07, '05, and '021, '06, which is the last time we did this. They were, for the most part, in front of Baker, Old Baker Center on East Union. I could see some difficulties having a conversation with the Police Department concerning in front of Washington, this area here, and private Sheriff Department with Washington over there, I suspect. What I'll do is I'll push this to my staff this week and see what they're saying. It's an evening event, it looks like, if I'm reading it correctly.
Kind of like a late afternoon.
Okay. Which is a little bit different than what's happened before. Before, it usually went from 8:00 to 5:00. This one sounds like it's on the start of 5:00. So, these are things we have to, 4:00 to 8:30. So, that's a little bit of different animal. And again, probably, as you say, March 15th is cutting it real close for a 30-day enactment of that.
Yeah.
Okay. And probably the thing to do is talk to me or my Service Safety Director, or Ron Lucas, the Assistant Service Safety Director. And probably Chris is going to have to be involved a little bit, too, just because she'll be, you'll be putting it forward, or you, one of the other.
And I hope the audience could take away from this, that, you know, when you do want to bring something like this up, you really need to think about a lag time, because if it would follow the normal ordinance process of three readings, that's six weeks there, because each reading theoretically should be two weeks apart to give the community time to react to it, make comments on it. Those comments generally cause things to turn out to be better. And then, the way the Ohio Revised Code is set up, an ordinance theoretically, unless it is, well, not theoretically, an ordinance does not become law for 30 days after the mayor signs it. So, you know, literally, it could be two and a half months for an ordinance. We started International Street Fair some time ago.
I'll have to say, it's not entirely their fault.
Oh, I, this is a learning moment, as our president would call it.
No, they actually had sent me an email earlier. My junk filters threw it right in the junk box, unfortunately. I apologize for that. But they are about a month ahead of this, until they come out.
I apologize for the testisment.
Oh, no. No, it's fine.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. And I'll pass this along.
Looking forward to your event.
There's a copy to the ordinance.
Is there others wishing to speak before council tonight?
Okay, great, thanks.
Again, your name and address, if you would.
Hi, I'm Jackie Vavaro, and I live on 62B Stewart, here in Athens. This year, I became a volunteer for the Empower Campaign, which is a nonprofit organization based here in Athens. It was founded by two OU faculty members, Andrea and Hogan Shiro. If you're not familiar with the Empower Campaign, it's dedicated to educating AIDS orphans and vulnerable, vulnerable children in Uganda, Africa. It does this by paying for school supplies and school uniforms, along with lunch programs, and is currently rebuilding Begodi Primary School and Nursery. I've come to the council meeting to invite all the council members, along with the mayor and members of the Athens community, to a wine tasting to benefit Empower. It is this Saturday, March 6th, at 6:30 p.m. at Latitude 39. Reservations are $35, with $10 of each reservation going to Empower Campaign. So, on behalf of the Empower Campaign, I'd like to thank you for your support and hope to see you at the wine tasting.
Thank you for your very important work. We really appreciate it. And we'll ask the government channel to have that added as a public service announcement.
Okay.
So, we will run that this week also.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Other comments, too? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.